It is now 5:02, October 16, 2018. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Good afternoon.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Negretti? Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mr. Negretti absent.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 54954.3. State law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone in the audience that would like to address the Council. Therefore, can we have declaration of closed session items by our City Attorney, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have two items this evening. They are both real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. Both on behalf of the City Council, the property APN numbers and the negotiating parties are fully set forth on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we recess to closed session, a regular session convened at 6:00 P.M. It is now 6:00, 6:00 P.M., October 16, 2018. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
At this time, can we have closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had two items this evening, both for the City Council. They were both real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The parcel numbers and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to those items.
Thank you. We will have the invocation to be delivered by Father Jude from St. John of Our Church and the pledge of allegiance to be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger, so please stand.
In God we trust, therefore let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings, the City of Victorville. Thank you for the life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicts, interest, and issue of our times, a sense of the welfare and true need of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Victorville. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
This evening, we do not have any proclamations or special presentations. So, City Clerk, please present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda, please.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. Thank you.
Thank you. This evening, we also do not have any appeal hearings. Therefore, we will move on to public hearings. And we will be starting with Item B1. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of a notice of exemption, appropriation of additional funds, and award of contract to DDH Apple Valley Construction for the storm drain improvements at Seneca and Hesperia Roads. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the notice of exemption for the storm drain improvements at Seneca and Hesperia Roads, adopt Resolution Number 18-085, add this project to the Measure I Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, and award a construction contract to DDH Apple Valley Construction for the storm drain improvements at Seneca and Hesperia Roads, Project BM 19-042, in the amount of $161,320.50.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by council members? You have two minutes. Starting with Mr. Negretti, do you have any questions? Kennedy? Jim?
Yeah, as a point of order, it's three minutes. Why did you reduce it to two minutes, if I may know?
The policy manual now is two minutes for questions.
Got it, thank you.
I see there's no one that has any questions, so I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards at this time. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And at this time, I request a motion and a second.
I would so move. Second. That includes all of the recommendations in the staff report, starting with number one through four. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Negretti. Any further questions or comments?
On February 17, 2017, a man by the name of Jerry Parker, 46, was rescued from the flash floods while found sitting on his Mercedes as the waters moved quickly around it. However, the unfortunate luck of another man on the same day did not fare so luckily. A man by the name of Michael Williams, age 39, lost his life on Pebble Beach Drive and Hughes Roads in the City of Victorville. And on that same Friday night, when his car was quickly overtaken by a flash flood, his father's car was pulled into the wash and he was announced dead at the scene despite the dangerous conditions. For the record, the City of Victorville must put out a new request for proposal to attain the best public service for public good contractors since it appears that the city does not or has not have a qualified in-house staff to deal with such project. And to the City Manager, would you be able to provide me or provide the council with the contracts and the agreements to this subject matter, hard copies and emails, please? If you look at this, we're talking about an item that is not addressing the fact that someone died on that facility. And I want to make sure that it was on the record and the staff knows that there's at least a couple of people that are concerned still about those storm drains.
Before you answer the question, and I do want the question answered.
This was just a comment. It was not a question.
Okay, then I will also make a comment, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
This project is, does not involve the wash where we, that Ms. Gomez just referred to. Separate item, separate location.
Have a motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B2, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of a notice of exemption and award of construction contract to Kearns, Inc. for the small diameter pipeline replacement. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the notice of exemption for the Pipeline Small Diameter Water Main Replacement SD-06 Project and award a construction contract to Kearns Incorporated, the California Corporation for the Small Diameter Water Main Replacement SD-06 Project BM 19-046, in the amount of $1,389,164.
Thank you. At this time, I'm asking if there's any questions of staff by council members, two-minute time limit.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Jim.
I know it's in the Water District, but is it in the city?
No, this is in the unincorporated area, the Mountain Views, Mountain View Acres area.
And that's county, right?
It is a county unincorporated, Iowa, and within the city, but it's within the Water District boundary.
Other questions? No? I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And I need a motion and a second.
I'm not sure, was formally, was the public hearing formally opened?
No.
We just quickly, just for procedure, we should technically open the public hearing. I don't think we have opened it.
I did open the public hearing.
Right. Stand corrected.
I opened the public hearing and I did not have any speaker cards. And then I did ask. I need a motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, if staff would start incorporating the same number as appears for the index to match the actual report, that would greatly assist some of us read these reports thoroughly. And it gets mixed up when I have to try to match and there's, I have to read the entire document before I can match what I'm associating it with. So, for instance, B2, B2 would be labeled on the agenda item. And that's what I meant when I said if you can match it in not just the page number that we already had, I appreciate that, but also the item that's relevant to this. Because this is not, it doesn't have that, so it's really difficult to read. Even a page has some kind of association to.
Well, I don't know where you're looking.
I'm looking at a comment. I'm sorry, bye.
Never mind. Okay, I move on to Item B3, Title 8. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we move on to Item B3, Title 8 and 13 of the municipal code. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve staff's recommendation to remove this item and renotice ordinance number 2383 for public hearing and council consideration at a later date.
Are there any questions of council members? Questions by council members of staff? Two-minute time limit.
Yeah, for Item B3?
Correct.
So, why is this going to be done now? What's the process? I would assume that when this was the case, we would do it then.
I can answer that. When we looked at this, we were trying to reconcile the municipal code with the existing fire code items that are in there. So, as we started looking at it, we saw some inconsistencies and some ambiguities. So, we wanted more time to make sure that once we bring this back, we have a very complete document that addresses the fire code in the right part of the Victorville Municipal Code.
Okay, and Title 8 and Title 13 are pertinent to fire?
Correct.
All right, thank you. No further questions?
Anyone else?
That is correct. Like a motion to pull this and then staff will bring it back. It was noticed as a public hearing, that's why it's on your agenda tonight. So, if you had some cards, it'd be appropriate to take them. However, it's going to be renoticed for a public hearing at a future date.
All right. And I do not have any speaker cards.
And a motion to pull the item.
Have we opened and closed the public?
We don't even need the public hearing at this time.
I'll move to pull the item.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Consent calendar. Consent calendar items C1 through C6 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion. Okay.
And I'm pulling C1 and 1, 2, and 4.
1 and what?
1, 2, and 4.
Madam Mayor, move C2 and C6.
She pulled 2. She pulled C2, so C3 and 6?
B1, 3, and 6.
So, C3 and C6.
C3 and C6 are the ones that are not controversial.
Move C3 and C6.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, seconded by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? C1 and C, I'm sorry, C3 and C6 approved unanimously?
For Item C1, it says 30 days. Is that 30 days from October 2nd? Is that 30 days from October 16th? And when is the final passage? This item has nothing to do with zone changes. Is that correct? And does staff know in which year this area became a C2? And what's some of its history?
The 30-day, the 30-day timeframe, when it becomes enforceable, would be 30 days from this date tonight upon adoption, assuming it's adopted for second reading. So, the effective date is 30 days from today.
And my question then became, this item has nothing to do with the zone changes, is that correct? And does staff know the year that this area became a C2 zone and some of its history? I'm assuming that there has been changes in the zoning laws and perhaps this falls under one of them. So, just vaguely and briefly is what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so the proposal that's before you today is only a code amendment for signage within the C2 zone. It's not changing the zone classification from commercial to another use.
I remember, thank you. That clarifies it all. For Item C2, there's $6 million. Is that $6 million the budget that's going to be adopted for June 19th? Is that, what period is that? June 19th through September 28th? Is that about three and a half months? Is that correct? I'm just used to seeing every two weeks and all of a sudden I see about four weeks or so. So, I don't, I'm not, I'm just clarifying if it's, is that what it is?
Madam Mayor, City Council, before you on this item is the, the commercial demand. It represents checks being paid between the dates of September 26th and September 27th for some wires that were done. So, it just represents those. And then the second piece is the issue that went out 10-3, so October 3rd. So, it's just representing those checks that were sent out on those two weeks.
So, I'm reading September anyway, September 28th per the adopted budget, June 19th. So, you're saying that it's one day's worth or just three vendor checks?
It's pay, it's accounts payable checks that were issued during those two weeks.
Okay.
And it's all relates back to the budget that was approved in June for the fiscal year.
What are those dates? Those are the dates I'm looking for.
So, the budget is approved from July 1 to June 30, covering all 12 months.
So, we're going back and approving 12 months' worth of vendor checks?
No, this is just the vendor checks that are paid for those two weeks.
Well, yeah, give me the dates of those two weeks.
The 9/26?
Okay.
And October, so September 26th and October 3rd.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and this one I have. An add. So, you can answer, you're going to take notes, you can answer this afterwards. But I'm looking, if you look at the Braun Blazing Smith Wine, I want to know what those Vemis legal fees are. I'm also looking at the California Department of Justice. There was a background check, just over a thousand. I want an explanation for that. The VB Speed Wash, just, I don't know how many vehicles were included, but if one vehicle costs us nearly $250, I want to know what happened. I'm just wanting a clarification for those. The other one was for the Battery Mart. I need some explanation on that. Robertson's, there's a lot of streets and some costs, but I don't know what they're associated with. So, I'd like to also look at that. And for South, Southern Edison, there's different streets associated with cost. I don't know if that has to do with street lighting. I'm just assuming and guessing. Okay, so I want to see what that is about. And then the other two things, I'm requesting a vendor list and how much the city spent from January 2016 to present. And it's only pertinent to what we spend on our parts for cars. Those are the vendor lists that I'm looking for. The other thing that I'm looking for is, to provide me with an, basically, I want to know what, how much we spent at the Fall Festival 2018. I don't know how much we spent.
Your time was up for C2?
That's what I'm looking for, thank you.
Can we connect afterwards so I can make sure that I get the list?
Then Item C4. Hey, this is the report. I mean, if you could just briefly tell me, I mean, I went through the report and I saw what we're doing there. But it wasn't as clear as, I'm assuming all these things, but I know staff has more, much, much more experience with that. And also with the October 2nd agenda, why was the October 2nd agenda attached? I mean, I don't know how that was relevant, so I'm kind of lost on why we attached the October 2nd. The other thing is, why, why is the city, why, why do we have city staff attending county meetings that are not beneficial to, to our local control? A couple of people attended the Spring Valley Lake County Meeting with Local 935. I mean, how is that benefiting and how is that public resources benefiting the city if we're not going to be county anymore? And I've also, I'm also looking at some Facebook posts during our time. I mean, are we using our time to put Facebook posts on Local 935? That's been brought to my attention as well. And will all the stations be up and running by March 2019 with equipment and staff? Because there's these rumors, which you've dispelled, that we're not going to close one or two. But I want to know if they're going to be fully equipped with staff ready to go by, by March 19th.
Um, Councilmember Gomez, can you clarify? Because you said C4. Are you making references to Item C5? Which would be the fire?
Well, it says Keith Mesler, City Manager, George Harris, Fire Service Transition Status Report.
So, that's C5, okay.
Did you have any questions on C4? Well, that's C5, right? Okay, so that's why, so I'll clarify again. That's why I need them to be labeled because it's really difficult to figure out what it is, so thank you. So, yeah, that's, those are my questions for C5. And I'll just skip on C4 because it's going to take me a while to figure out where I'm at.
Madam Mayor asked to pull this. I had known this report was coming and I was anticipating it. Chief Benson done an evaluation of apparatus, facilities, equipment, throughout the system. I found it pretty disturbing that much of our equipment had repair. It almost looked like there's been no maintenance done on some of these things, these problem areas you've identified. And at first, I thought, well, maybe he's just being picky. He's just picking at little things. But we're talking about pump testing, testing fire hoses, pre-incident planning, apparatus, but the one that I wanted to ask you about was live fire training. And if you don't mind, I'm going to read a little bit about this so people know what I'm talking about. It's a four-story masonry training tower located behind Station 311, which is down on 7th Street, right near the fairgrounds. Tower is configured for a number of training evolutions, including live fire training. Tower is configured for a number of training evolutions, including live-fire training. In those cases, live fires are intentionally set in specific areas of the tower. Proves complete fire attack evolutions in order to prepare for structure and other types of fires. Live-fire training, similar to any structure fire, is extremely hazardous. As a result of firefighters being killed and injured during live-fire training, NFPA 1403 established some standards for how the, the fuels should be used and how the burns are done. While conducting your walkthrough of the live-fire training tower, members of county fire indicated that rubber tires had been used in live-fire training evolutions. NFP 1403 states that wood products are the acceptable-
Your time is up for C4?
For live-fire.
Sorry, C5?
The use of petroleum-based products such as tires, the, the sentence says, "are compliant with NFPA 1403", but am I right? You meant to say they are not compliant?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, the, uh, I erred in, in that sentence. It is, "such as tires are not compliant with NFPA 1403", and that is, is a result of previous training fires that have occurred where they had used similar materials. Uh, synthetic and petroleum-based products have a very different, uh, burning characteristic. And firefighters have been killed and injured when those products have been used. So, it was my error in, in not inserting "are not compliant" there.
Do you believe we have more surprises waiting, uh, as we finish this transition to our own?
Well, as we evaluate-
Identify all of them.
I'm sorry?
There are more coming or have we identified them all?
As we evaluate different aspects, we continue to find, uh, areas where compliance in, uh, maintenance and/or standards is not being met. Uh, at this point, I can't say what I don't know, but as we continue to identify, uh, each of these, we are documenting them and we're bringing, be bringing similar subsequent reports to council summarizing our findings.
I want to thank the fire, uh, team for their work on this project. It was very revealing.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'd, I'd just like to add, if, if I can, it's been a long, um, long process getting to, to October, uh, from the direction given in January. And I'd like to just call attention to some recollection of history, which was when we first started this. A large part of the motivation to move forward, uh, was cost-based. Uh, we were concerned about the rising cost of the service and the, um, the revenues to provide, to pay for those services not increasing at the same rate. So, we started down this path, uh, largely based upon what's the most cost-effective. And at the time in January, uh, I went so far as to identify that it wasn't about a question of the quality of service from the County of San Bernardino Fire Department. Um, I am here to tell you, and a large part of the reason for this report was not only to update you on our progress, um, but we've learned a lot in the last 10 months. And I think it's very appropriate, uh, to identify to you that as we've learned over the last 10 months, um, we are now questioning that quality of service. To the point where, not to be critical, we're taking advantage of what we're learning and we're actually applying it in how we're deploying your fire department, uh, effective, uh, March 30th. So, we're actually, um, taking the experience and the expertise that we're getting from the recruitments. Uh, we've got the command staff in place. We've got the captains in place. We've hired the engineers. We're pretty darned close to being complete with, with the entire recruitment process. Um, and as we're learning more about the station, especially as what we've learned from the transition of 319 and as we're learning more, um, we're absolutely confident because of some of the things that we're, uh, learning, uh, and based upon the diverse experience that we're bringing on with the new staff, uh, we're actually believing that quality of service is going to be better, uh, once Victorville Fire is up and running.
Would it be safe to say that, that what county fire did, they did very well, but there are some things now we're finding that they just didn't do?
There definitely seems to, that, that seems to be the case. And, and certainly we're finding that we would, with our leadership, do things differently.
Can I continue on?
I'll make, I'll move approval of the remaining consent calendar items. What's that, 1?
2, 4, and 5.
1, 2, 4, and 5.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to, uh, written communications. And we start with item D1, request to approve the automatic and mutual aid agreements, uh, with San Bernardino County Fire Protection District. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the automatic aid and mutual aid agreements with San Bernardino County Fire Protection District with zero financial impact and authorize a city manager or his designee to execute said agreements.
Thank you. At this time, uh, council members, do you have any questions of staff? Two-minute, uh, time limit.
Yeah, the mutual aid request may be declined if the sending agency department resources are unavailable. That was kind of concerning to me to even have the possibility that there would be a rejection of any other agency that would want to assist or could assist but couldn't assist us either because it's motivated or because they're so congested with their own mutual aid, whether there be a fire or any kind of evacuation. So, how will the city, um, be dealing with this issue if and when it shows its face? It rears its ugly face in the city of Victorville and it happens to be just the perfect condition where we don't, we do not get that mutual aid.
Madam Mayor and City Council, before you, you have the automatic aid and mutual aid agreement between Victorville Fire and San Bernardino County Fire. There will be subsequent aid agreements that will be brought forward for your, uh, review and approval. And it's the intent of these multiple agreements in which aid is layered so that if an agency is unavailable to assist, that you have a redundant backup, uh, agency that can assist.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So, I, thank you for addressing that, but when I see in a report that mutual aid requests may be declined, that's a shell. That's something that is obligatory, that, that can definitely occur. It's not a possibility. And so, that was my concern, but thank you for addressing the question.
I have questions, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
When I read this, uh, of course, automatic aid, mutual aids are something that's very common between entities to assure that the health, safety, welfare of the public is protected and looked after and the people that sit on boards with the city or county are very much aware that coverage will be at all times. But in reading this, it appears that the mutual aid is for fire, but the paramedics will not.
Madam Mayor and City Council, the aid agreement that county fire had proposed and that we had discussed and ultimately agreed on was only for structured fire and wildland fire only. It did not include any other type of response, including more common medical aid call.
So, we're not going to have paramedics on our fire equipment?
No, we will have paramedics on our fire equipment. But as far as mutual aid and automatic aid, we will only be responding to or sharing resources during a structured fire or a wildland fire.
Well, um, I, I understand mutual aid, automatic aid. I do not believe, I cannot, there's something wrong here. And I request that staff of our mayor direct a letter to Mr. Lovinggood. I know i- in reality, if you look at the distance from the fire station, we're going to have an immediate response for the fire. We're going to have paramedics, but we're not going to be responsible for the paramedic. And that's waiting for someone to respond from a county station, which is either 6.74 miles away or 3.25. That doesn't make any sense. That's just, doesn't make any sense at all. I read it and I went over it the second time and I went over it the third time. My apologies. I did not discuss this with the staff because I don't think this is a staff matter. I think it's a legislative matter between the City Council and the Board of Supervisors. I think that the mayor ought to address that with our supervisor. I, it, it seems to me that he's taking quite a chance with heart attacks and other calls for, for paramedic service of the Mountain View Acres area. It just defies logic if I'm reading this right.
Yes, sir. Um, so the area in question is the Mountain View Acres area, which is unincorporated, but it is totally surrounded by the city of Victorville. And when we began having the discussions with San Bernardino County Fire staff, uh, we asked them, Deputy City Manager Harris and myself inquired if they would be interested in us, the city of Victorville, providing automatic aid into the Mountain View area for medical aid calls. And they declined that.
We don't charge for this service, do we?
Uh, that's correct. We made it very clear to them that it would be done at no call, at no cost. It would be just a, a matter of public health and safety for those members of the community living in, in that unincorporated area.
Clarification to the council and the mayor and council, I don't want to hold this up. It's a very important part of us moving ahead, but that really needs to be revisited. It's not a race to see who can get there first. It's a matter of health, safety, welfare for all of those individuals we're protecting. So, are mutual aid agreements. We don't charge. We don't send a bill. So, I just cannot imagine that we would have one or two vehicles that would respond and have to wait for a paramedic unit coming from three to seven miles away. That just defies logic and I'm not sure what staff would agree with this. So, I don't need to go into it now. We need to approve this, but we need to also understand that we need to have further discussions on that particular item, I believe, in my opinion.
Can we force the county to?
No.
No, sir.
No, it's a county area, but that's just silly to have that kind of an agreement. It would be tantamount to when we have the verse where our, our equipment is at a, at a fire or mutual aid and we call for mutual aid to say, yeah, you can send your truck, but you can't send your paramedics. That'd be silly. We would be jeopardizing the health, safety, welfare of the very citizens we're supposed to be protecting. That just defies logic.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, sorry to raise this, uh, but I read it a couple of times and that's the way I read it.
I wonder if it would make sense to raise this with our-
Well, I think it has to be raised with the supervisor. He represents that area. We do not. He's the elected representative and I believe that the elected representative, uh, ought to be the one to answer to that.
I think it's just important to be clear. We, we've extended and are more than willing as Victorville to provide both of those services into the Mountain View Acres area. It's the county, uh, Fire Chief that has actually declined the medical aspect of that, believing that they would rather provide it themselves to the Mountain View Acres area.
I, I, yeah, I don't. The point I'm raising is I don't think this is good for the people who live there. I think that we will be criticized. The first time that's needed, we do provide it. And I'm just not sure that our supervisor is aware of this and that's my point. He should be aware of this, uh, about this.
And we make a, a, a motion to approve this, add to it, uh, a direction to the city manager, our fire chief, to communicate with Robert Lovinggood on this issue and see if we can't get a better resolution to it.
I, I don't want to disagree, but with all due respect to our fire chief, he doesn't have that kind of authority to make this agreement. That's why we're approving it. If he had presented it and said, "I recommend strongly you approve it", we probably would have. I don't know that the supervisor is even aware of this. So, I think that it should be from elected official to elected official. Our appointed officials, fire chief to fire chief, have negotiated an agreement. And it seems not to be working for Mountain View Acres. So, at this point, I think a letter or a phone call from the mayor directly to our supervisor is warranted.
Do we make a motion to, uh?
I will second that motion. Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, um, acceptance of site cleanup, sub-account program SCAP, grant funds from the State Water Resources Control Board for Soil and Groundwater Re-Redemption at the former New Way, uh, New Way Dry Cleaners. Um, Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 18-086, accepting the award of site cleanup sub-account program, grant funds from the State Water Resources Control Board in the amount of $1,457,000, or $457,598 over a three-year term. Authorize the deputy city manager to execute any and all grant-related documents necessary to secure said grant funds and to implement and carry out the purpose specified in the grant application and adopt Resolution Number 18-087, amending the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget for the revenue and expenditures for said grant.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff at this time? Two-minute, uh, time.
Yes, what are the expenses and the revenues approximately? Is that 1.4? And then for the kickoff meeting, is that open to the public? And the extent of impact to groundwater has not been adequately charact- characterized. What does staff mean by that? And please contextualize how groundwater contamination and the New Way by cleaner site can assist with remediating any threat to secure our groundwater and our surface water in the city of Victorville. And I'm also requesting dates. I'd like to be able to sit in and listen to that first kickoff meeting.
Madam Mayor and Council, um, I may have to have you read that last question. Uh, the revenue is, um, as stated in the staff report, the $1,457,598 over three years. So, that's the revenue and the related expenditures would be the same. Um, you asked if the jet meeting would be open to the public. It intended to be a staff meeting between the water board and city staff on, um, the specifics of the grant.
And please contextualize the groundwater contamination with New Way by cleaner site and how, how can it, how are you going to be assisting with the remediation threat to secure groundwater with the surface water? I know we got a grant. I know that's going to be oversight. I know La Honton is going to be there. But I want the community to know that we're doing something with a grant and they don't have to be afraid of the water being contaminated because we're going to use decontaminants so that doesn't occur.
So, that's correct. At the former, uh, New Way Dry Cleaning Site, we have done soil removal, um, that, and, and found some, uh, levels of contamination there. This grant would be focused on trying to assess the level of contamination, um, for the groundwater supply. And then the grant would also be used to address and remediate any such contamination. Uh, one of the methods that is being considered and has been submitted, um, as part of the grant application is the introduction of some chemicals that would help, um, clear up basically the, any contamination from the dry cleaning site.
You have no further questions? Anyone else?
I don't have any, uh, speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Move approval of the staff recommendations, A, B, C, D, which is to accept the grant, the budget amendment, the award notice, and signing of the grant agreement.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, request to award general services provider standard agreements to Scorpion Fire Protection, Inc. and Odyssey Power Corporation for stationary equipment maintenance. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the award of general services provider standard agreements with Scorpion Fire Protection and Odyssey Power Corporation for stationary equipment maintenance, project number CC19-009, in the not-to-exceed amounts of $89,000 and $11,600 respectively.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by council members?
Yes. What formula or rationale does the city use to approximate this? What formula or rationale does the city use to approximate this unanticipated repair? So it says, "The additional budget amounts for each contract for unanticipated repairs are $11,000" and so forth for the fire pumps, and about $2,000 for generators and so forth. So I'm looking at how do you come up with this unanticipated figure in dollar amounts? And looking at Exhibit C, it talks about prevailing wages. It's inferring that the contractor, in my reading of this, is going to potentially have the ability to subcontract out the contract after it's been bitted out. That's on page 223. And is the city going with both responsive bidders? That's just clarification that I need. I know we're using Scorpion and Odyssey, and I know they're two different services. There's two separate bid proposals, one for the generators and one for the fire pumps. So I just need a clarification that my understanding is accurate.
Madam Mayor and Council, the answer to the first question regarding... Sorry, let me go back to that page. The first question was about how the dollar amounts, the additional dollar amounts to the contract for repairs was established. So the bids were for what would be considered routine and regular preventative maintenance of both sets of equipment, both the fire pumps as well as the emergency generators at the airport. And those amounts are the $77,000 referenced in the staff report, and then the $11,000 is for unanticipated repairs. So as they're doing preventative maintenance, if a particular piece on the equipment needs to be replaced, mostly parts, those types of things, then it would not be covered under that preventative maintenance budget. It wouldn't be the cost of them going out and checking the equipment. We'd have to pay for those various parts and repairs. And so our experience has shown us that we need to also set aside a small budget for those repairs for items that are found during the preventative maintenance checks.
So the approximately $11,000 is based on just prior experience, so it doesn't really change? It's standardized at $11,000, or does it vary depending on year per year, and you're incrementing? That's what I wanted to figure out. Are you just going by experience? Do you have a formula? Is there a process? Or just, you know?
Yeah, so the experience is... It's the experience of the staff who deals with this every year, but it's also based on past amounts.
Thank you.
And the answer to your second question is you characterized it appropriately. There are two different contracts with two different providers for the two different services.
And then Exhibit C?
Asked about subcontracting?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm getting to that page. Looking for the verbiage because they are not subcontracting the only... Let's see, which section of 223?
Yeah, so the entire... When I read it, it's either implicit or inferred. It's not that I have the contract in front of me, but I'm assuming that we have language in our actual contract and ordinances that contractors are allowed to subcontract. But because the language is not embedded here, I'm assuming that that's a potential... It's there because there's no clause that prohibits it.
Well, when we send out, when we go out to bid, they actually have to list their subcontractors, and I don't believe any of this is subcontracted. They're the direct providers, Odyssey and Scorpion.
All right, thank you. No further questions?
Anyone else? No. I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion in a second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Negretti. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, Award Of Contract To Gridline Skate Parks, Inc. For The Doris Davis Skate Park Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council postpones the item without further discussion until such time as staff can provide additional information to address a potential bid protest as well as questions raised at the October 2, 2018 meeting.
I believe I do have some speaker cards on this one here. Daniel Ramos.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff as well. Just wanted to follow up with the questions that we asked at the last council meeting concerning the skate park, when it came to the size of the skate park, the price per square foot, and as well as who will be responsible for maintaining the skate park on an annual $1.7 million or anything over that is a tremendous amount to be spending on a skate park when Victorville is apparently in dire need of a lot of other things besides a skate park. I'm not here to talk about whether a skate park is a good idea or not. That's a different discussion, but I do beg you guys to please think about spending $1.7 million on a skate park for Victorville when the national average on a skate park is only $550,000. So that's that. I'm going to use my last minute here. Mr. Kennedy, sir, I'm not sure if I'm going to be attending any other council meetings here in the future because I have a newborn. Actually, he's on his way right now. I just got the text from my other half, and she's having contractions. So I did... Thanks, guys. I did want to actually publicly thank you for your time. I know this is... I know you're not rerunning again, and I wanted to publicly thank you for the job that you've done for Victorville. Regardless of what people think about you or say about you, it's tough sitting up there. It's tough sitting in any type of leadership position. I know that. But from the bottom of my heart, thank you. You've done a tremendous job for the city of Victorville in all your years. Victorville will be safe in the hands of its future leaders. I promise you that. You'll be able to sleep easy at night, but thank you very much for your time, your dedication, and the sacrifice you made for helping the city of Victorville. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Blakely.
My concerns along with Daniel Ramos about the skate park are the same. Also, the location of the skate park. Placing it at Doris Davis Park is not wise due to the high crime area over there. My suggestion would be to rethink where you want to put it. There is so much concern about the golf course and the property value. Those homes over there are old. There is no property value with the golf course. It's not going to matter if the golf course is there or not there. Those homes are built in the 80s and prior to the 80s. If you want to improve the golf course, put the skate park there. Any improvement you do to that golf course is only going to improve the value of those old homes. I'm just suggesting putting the skate park at Doris Davis Park, you're just asking for trouble. All you're going to do is cost the city more money by having to clean up the graffiti that that skate park is going to cause, plus the fact that we do not have a large enough skate community for that skate park. Please understand, this is 2018, and things are starting to float now. We don't have a big enough community for a skate park. Thank you.
Those were the only speaker cards that I had. So at this time, I need a motion in a second.
I'll move.
For clarity, the motion is to postpone this item and have staff bring it back at a future date.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I... No, I didn't vote, and I didn't get the opportunity to get my questions in. I don't know what happened with the way we follow our policy, but it wasn't opened up so staff has questions, so I'm going to go ahead and proceed. Right here it says, "To allow sufficient time for staff to thoroughly vet such issues." Has staff found out what the issues are, and would they be able to state some of those issues, or are they still not founded? The other question is, could staff recount or narrate the bid protests that has been scribed on this item? In other words, what's going on with this item? I feel lost what happened last time and what's happening now. And the next thing is, how much will it cost to maintain that skate park? Who will be maintaining that park, that skate park? And how many acres or how many yards? What was the figure again that we had? Because I know we had a smaller park and then the larger park that we were going to go with. Those are my questions that I want...
It does read that this item has... Will not have any additional discussion.
Yeah, that's...
Well, I can answer quickly just for the benefit of the public. Right now, we are reviewing a couple of bid protests, and they're complicated. The bidding process was complicated, so that's why staff is recommending at this point that we don't have further discussion on it until we get through those issues and work through those issues, and then we will bring it back to the council for a recommendation at a future date.
Then we can ask all the questions necessary, and...
Correct. Given that there's bid protests out there, I'd recommend we don't discuss it further at this point.
Correct. I still need a motion.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
And I'm going to make a sub-motion to table the award of the contract to Gridline Skate Park for Davis Doris Skate Park Project, including the addition of the park and amenities.
Is there a second? There being no second, that motion dies. The original motion was made by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
The point of clarification, what is it precisely that we're doing, just bringing it back at a later date because we can't discuss it today?
Correct. We are recommending that we pull the item. Staff will bring it back once they have resolved the issues related to the bid protests, and will make a recommendation at that point.
Okay, so in other words, that means no longer...
Yeah, it's similar to what you had requested, which is tabling the item, basically.
All right.
Okay, item D5.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, Request To Approve Award Of Contract For Two SCADA... I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right. SCADA Communications Towers For Water District Well Sites. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board Of Directors Approve The Award Of Contract For The Purchase And Delivery Of Two SCADA Communication Towers To Tally Incorporated For An Amount Not To Exceed $58,000.
Thank you. At this time, council members, any questions of staff? Two-minute time limit? None? I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion in a second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Negretti. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, Network And Equipment For Fire Stations. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council Approve The Purchase Of Six Network Routers, Switches, Wireless Access Points, Associated Licensing, Fiber Optic Adapters, And Professional Services To Implement New Computer Info Networks For Fire Stations 311, 312, 313, 314, 315, And 319, In The Amount Of $70,535.79.
Thank you. Council members, questions of staff? Two-minute limit.
Yeah, so in reading the report with all its attachment, it seems that this is something fairly new, and I'm assuming it's because we need to be able to communicate with the city since it's going to be locally controlled. That's something probably that the county didn't have privilege to, and I'm assuming they probably didn't need it. But if that is the case, if you would please verify, because I'm just reading under a lot of assumption with some of the experience that I've gained over the last two years. The other thing is, what is the purpose of this fire tech services? It's my first time looking at this, if it's a fund. I'm assuming it is because it's a business account. And what are some of the examples? If you can pull up from the very items and give me one or two examples as how these are functioning and how we are retrieving funds and revenues to be budgeted in this item, because I don't recall council approving an item, but of course, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Council. Before you tonight on this item is a necessary piece of the entire fire conversion picture, which would include connecting our local network here at City Hall to all the fire stations where there were existing data connection is connected to San Bernardino County services. As far as answering the question as to what funding was approved, this was approved as part of the annual budget process to be included as part of the total complete picture for the fire conversion. And this is a general fund account that's covering these expenses, and so it was included.
And then, just to clarify, you said it is connected with county services?
So the networking now that's in the fire stations that are being operated by the county fire department are connected to county data... The county infrastructure.
Which would be SCADA.
No.
That's different?
SCADA has nothing to do with fire service. So this is basically interconnectivity for all fire-related systems, including the dispatching as well as general networking. That would include their email, their access to our network, and so forth.
So we're no longer going to be using Ontario as the hub like we did with county? We would use... Any dispatch calls would go there, and they would be rerouted? This is going to be a completely different rerouting of the system?
I'm not exactly sure what reference to Ontario you're making, but currently, the dispatch is handled out of a system in Rialto.
Okay.
And we will be also using that same dispatch center, but as far as the IT portion of the fire operations, now that they're going to be a part of the city services, it's going to connect back to our network rather than the county's network.
I'm just waiting for that example to pull, to associate with the fire services.
So to give you an example of what's being installed, there's a network of routers, Wi-Fi access points, network switches, and internet connectivity, basically, which is a combination of those routers and switches.
Thank you. No further questions.
I don't have any speaker cards, therefore we need a motion in a second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Negretti. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to our public comments. And Madam Clerk, read the public statement before we get started here.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak, all communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403.
Thank you. The first card that I have is Tyler Woodard, and then after Tyler is Maggie Martin.
Good evening, council. Twenty-one days from now will be election day. This is an important election, not only for California but for Victorville. Two seats on the council are up... Two seats on the council are up this year. Whoever wins these two seats will have an enormous impact on the way Victorville is governed. It is vital that Victorville residents take their time and research every candidate running for city council because for the past two years, Victorville has experienced what happens when someone unqualified gets elected. Blanca's two years on the council have brought nothing but division and embarrassment to this city. For instance, Blanca was kicked out of the homeless shelter last December for filming residents staying at the shelter and for going through confidential documents. She has misused public funds. She livestreamed former Hesperia Mayor Russ Blewett's funeral on Facebook. She went to an undesignated area at Hesperia City Hall where deputies removed her because she refused to leave when she was asked to. And she refuses to let Victorville enforce immigration laws. Blanca has been working tirelessly since she was elected to implement a socialist agenda in Victorville. Many of the candidates running for city council are as unqualified as she is and will be nothing but the vote she needs to fully implement her misguided agenda. If the two council, if the two council seats up this year get filled with individuals that are like Blanca, the controversy and division will only continue to get worse. We need people on the dais that are qualified and will best address the issues Victorville is facing. I think the council are given this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Maggie Martin? After Maggie, it's, uh, April Pinkston.
Maggie Martin, Victorville. Good evening, your honor, council. I have two items I'd like to discuss. Um, one is the Victorville City Council Candidate Forum, October eighth, at BBC. Um, for the most part, it was very disappointing. In my opinion, there are only three qualified candidates to serve on this council. To the others, I would say the following. One, I will not vote for anyone who supports recreational marijuana. Two, I will not vote for anyone who does not know they sit on the Board of Trustees for the Southern California Logistics Authority and additionally whom I've never seen at council meetings. Three, I will not vote for anyone who thinks it's the council's responsibility to inform them of the issues of Victorville, how it all works together, and provide them such information. It is the candidate's responsibility to do their research. To suggest otherwise is ridiculous. Four, I will not, um, vote for anyone who suggests that popping a couple of quote edibles, end quote, is a solution for getting the business of Victorville done. Altered judgment leads to poor and unwise decisions and perhaps explains our current problem on the council. Five, I most certainly will not vote for anyone who criticizes or passes judgment on the actions of Victorville PD, referring specifically to the recent and unfortunate fatal shooting of a woman on Seventh Street. To suggest wrongdoing without knowing all of the facts, if any, is just plain ignorant. These types of tragedies involve a thorough and often time-consuming investigation by the people qualified by experience to do so. Therefore, that process deletes the opinions of the general public. The, um, other item is, this is about, um, well, I'm just gonna read it. The second item is regarding a four-page front and back document from the last council meeting that Ms. Gomez left for the public to take a copy of from the table in the foyer. This was a list of questions to the city manager, Mr. Keith Metzler, and the city attorney, Mr. Andre Dave Benretsky. Sorry about that. This document was filled with misspellings, incorrect punctuation, incorrect capitalization, grammar errors, run-on sentences, and poor sentence structure. I am appalled by this because most desktop computers, laptops, et cetera, have application to assist people whose skills are clearly not proficient in the English language. Distributing this type of poor quality work for public assumption is beyond me and should be an embarrassment to Councilmember Gomez. I can't imagine anyone who may have looked at that not wondering to themselves how she even managed to pass a high school English-written, writing composition class. She claims to have a college degree. You could fool me. How she has slid by with this for all these years is beyond my comprehension. Again, Councilmember Gomez, I would suggest you have someone proficient at proofreading, review your material. That was just plain abysmal and unacceptable. The bar is set here, and you're not meeting it. I am submitting these comments, both-
Your time is up.
-to the city clerk for, um, entering into the public record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, in returning the corrected document to Ms. Gomez.
Uh, April, uh, Pinkston. And after April is, uh, Ruth Cordova.
Good evening, council. And, um, mayor. You know, when I come up here to speak, you know, I don't, I don't bring notes. I speak from the heart. And I'm gonna tell you right now that I have been going door-to-door and business-to-business attempting to get signatures to recall Blanca. I have been informed by several Hispanic business owners that they are being threatened, mafia-style threats, by Blanca and her ilk, that if they do not support her, their businesses will be boycotted and they will be run out of business. Now, several of these business owners have told me this. And I think this is inexcusable. And they have told me also that they are afraid to come to city council meetings because they do not want her to know that they oppose her. And I just think that that is just absolutely disgusting. And I think the public needs to know that. And that's all I have to say on that issue.
Thank you. Uh, Ruth Cordova. After Ruth, uh, Dr. Rita Ramirez.
Good evening, uh, Ms. Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, command staff, and city managers. Um, I just shot from the hip. And I'm gonna speak from the heart and read my little chicken scratch that I wrote just two seconds ago. But the purpose of me being here tonight is in support and defense of Councilman Negrete with respect to the domestic violence issue that was cited by the press. An incident that occurred ten years ago. Not any time recent. It occurred ten years ago. And this is all that they, they could find and identify. Something that was unrelated to his position as a city councilman. They had to look deep. And the only thing that they could find is something that occurred ten years ago outside the course and scope of his performance as a city councilman. And furthermore, he did not assume the role and didn't even think about assuming a role and didn't think about what was gonna occur ten years after the fact. Um, moreover, um, at the time of the incident, he did not know and understand the nature, the quality of his act. He had a little bit of alcohol. And many of us have been in bad situations. And may I share mine? I was eighteen years old, getting ready and trained really hard to go into the Marine Corps. My father was in the military and all my brothers were in the military. I have eleven brothers and I'm the youngest female. Um, I got kicked out of the house because I came home after midnight. And I had a baby at eighteen years old. I loved my husband, my ex-husband then. But I had nowhere to go and I had a brand-new baby at eighteen years old. We were homeless. And I couldn't get welfare. It was a very different time. We lived in an alley behind Rampart Tommy's Burgers. And they fed me their extra hamburgers. I was a hundred and eighty pounds and went from a hundred and eighty to a hundred and three pounds in two and a half weeks on the basis of starvation. And I couldn't breastfeed my baby anymore and he was dying. It was four o'clock in the morning and we're in the Volkswagen. And he's crying because he's hungry. And I'm crying because I can't feed him. And I'm praying to Jesus and saying, God, help me, please. I don't know what to do. The following morning, I received three phone calls and I had three interviews with, one with the Los Angeles Police Department, Hollenbeck Division, RNI, and Hollywood. I got hired on to Hollywood Division, working under the direction of homicide bureau.
You have thirty seconds.
My son went on to the United States Air Force, served seventeen years and served God and country. And he said, Mom, if I don't come home again, remember, I love you. And I said, I love you too. And I said, don't you forget, sweetheart, your best days are your hardest days because that's how leaders are made. This is a very, very critical time in the history of America. And I ask that we all pull together in this critical time and that we hold on to the blindfolds of Lady Justice and separate our differences here in the dais and work in the best interest for the American people and the American flag. And that the people listening to this support Councilman Negrete.
Stop.
Thank you.
Uh, Rita Ramirez. And, uh, after Rita, Al Cotello.
I came to say thank you and to acknowledge your compassion and dedication. As a possible candidate and hopefully elected, I have come to realize all that you have to suffer and all the dedication and passion that you have. So I want to say to Mr. Kennedy, thank you for your eight years. I know that you have done so much for the residents of Victorville. And I hope that everybody comes to realize that you have left a legacy to the city with your compassion and commitment in that you always have put people first. I thank you all, especially to Gloria and to Keith and to Heidi and especially to Charlene, who helped me during this very short time to come to realize the responsibility it is to be a council, city councilperson. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you. Al Cotello. And after Al, Christine, uh, Al Cotello? He left. Uh, Marilyn English. And after Marilyn, uh, Ramiro Rodriguez.
Um, Mayor Garcia, City Council. Good evening. Um, I'm a local business owner, just happened to move into the neighborhood, saw a need on Seventh Street. And we have a nonprofit organization that's located in Hesperia. And we came down to Victorville because we were already servicing the community. I was invited to this meeting this afternoon. I have never even attended a city council meeting. So, um, this is all new to me. But I had no intention of speaking, but when I heard the money that's being spent on the skate park, not even a mile away from where all the homeless community and their campments are, I just wanted to say I don't understand how that decision was made. And I do understand this is my first time showing up in Victorville. But with the homeless community and on Seventh Street and Doris Day is just around the corner from what I can tell. I'm not sure. I guess I need to talk to some more people in the city to see what's going on. But I just wanted to make that statement. It's not really a question. I just don't understand how we're building a million-dollar skate park and we have this huge problem with the homeless community right here in Victorville on Seventh. And when I got to Seventh Street, everybody's complaining to me, telling me how I, since I helped the homeless people and bringing these people to the community. And I know I didn't bring them here. I came here because they were there. So I do have intentions of talking to someone in the council, planning commission or something. But thank you for your time. I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you. Uh, Ramiro Rodriguez. And after Ramiro, Christine Blakely.
Good evening, council. For the last few weeks, I've been coming down here and expressing myself, giving my opinion, reading what's happened in the past here in, uh, Victorville. Um, one of the things I, I've noticed is a lot of people coming here, up here, and talking about other people. I noticed one person even came up here and gave a very detailed analysis of somebody's arrest records from him, his sons, his grandkids, and everybody. But to somebody else's arrest record that never came up until it came out in the light. And, you know, politics, that's politics. It plays, it's not fair. People think that democracy is nice and clean and pretty, but it's, it's ugly. And they're gonna do anything and say anything to keep people there. Uh, one of the things Mr. Rommel said that, thanking Mr. Kennedy, and, you know, it takes a lot of dedication. When he leaves, uh, the person up there will be, will be in charge because the, the people, the populations are the ones that run the city hall. You guys are leaders. You guys are supposed to guide us, recommend what we do, and listen to us. Not just us standing here and being just puppets so you guys can just dot the i's and cross the t's and, and, and handle what has to be done on your part. I noticed one thing a few weeks ago with the matter of, of the mayor and the city, um, pertaining to her cost, court cost. And you were discussing about it, but you had already taken care of that the week before. So we were just here venting. So really, it doesn't really matter what we say. And that's gotta change. That's gotta change. And another thing is, uh, I've read, I suggest people to read the LAist from Libby Denkman from October fifteenth. That's a very good, uh, article they wrote. And also San Bernardino Sentinel, July twentieth, twenty eighteen. The people listening, the people here, read that. And you wanna go back to December third, twenty seventeen? That's a very strong article that dictates everything that's going on here. We're here because we see we need change. And maybe we, some of us need to be up there. Uh, we're not criticizing. You guys are doing a wrong thing or the wrong job. But sometimes we feel like we're not being listened to. Or we're just being taken, uh, in consideration. And just like I said, you guys are just, uh, need us here to have the meeting so you guys can go ahead and-
You have thirty seconds.
So hopefully, the candidates that we have running right now will prosper and we'll see some new, new faces. Not different faces with the same ideology, but with our ideology. And have democracy really, really work up there. Thank you very much.
Hello, it's me again, Christine Pepper Blakely. And yes, I'm running for city council. And yes, I have no filter. I'm going to keep it one hundred. Because that's the only way I know how to be. I only know how to be honest. I ride my own beast and I apologize when I'm wrong. I apologize to Deborah Jones, uh, publicly, not for what I said, but for what, how I said it. And I thanked her for correcting what I said. She and I have made our, our ways and she and I will discuss what we will discuss. As far as the city council is concerned, I can't thank you for the job you did. Because as far as I'm concerned, for being a longtime resident here, you haven't done anything except ignored the residents of Victorville. I'm sorry, that's just how it is. When you take a loan out on property that belongs to the city and you lie to the city about it and you won't tell us the truth, that's not benefiting the city of Victorville. I asked Mr. Cox the last time I was here, did the city take a loan out on the golf course? And his response was, huh, 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 no. You told a lie. The city of Victorville did take a loan out on the golf course. And you said you didn't. You did. It was verified at the forum that we had at the college. I'm gonna ask you now, in front of everybody, what was the money used for that you guys took the loan out at the golf course? What was the money used for?
As soon as I finish, I have staff answer any questions that they raise.
I'm sorry? Well, I'd like an answer. I'm sorry, Mayor, could you please ask the Mayor Potem what the loan that was taken out on the golf course, what the money was used for? When was the loan taken out? What was it used for?
We have to wait until you complete all your-
I'm sorry?
We have to wait until you complete your dialogue.
Okay. I would like to know for the residents of Victorville, what the loan was taken out for? What the money was used for? When was it taken out? How much was it used for? And who really owns the golf course? Who is the LLC behind the golf course? We want the truth. If you can give us a good reason why we are paying so much money for the golf course, who really owns it and what the money was used for? We have no problem backing the golf course. I am not a Trump hater. I am a resident lover. And I'm tired of paying for lawsuits to defend people on this council. If you need a lawyer and you can't afford to get a PD. But you need to tell us what you took that loan for on the golf course and what the money was used for.
Your three minutes are up.
Will someone speak with her later? Or now?
Um, I could address that. Uh, one of the questions, um, I've actually already addressed in my private meeting with Ms. Blakely as to the loan. And I can, uh, share with you that, uh, the, the loan that I believe she's referencing- as to the loan, and I can share with you that the loan that I believe she's referencing is not a loan out on the golf course. There is, the golf course is used as collateral for a larger financing connected to bonds that were issued to support the development and the operation of the Victorville Municipal Utility, both at Foxborough and at Southern California Logistics Airport. So it's not a loan out on the golf course, it's a security pledge along with a number of other facilities, including city hall, the fire stations, and a few other facilities. As to the ownership of the golf course, the ownership of the golf course, the vesting of the property is in the city of Victorville.
Thank you. I think that answered all the questions that she had.
The financing was, I was gonna guess, 2008, 2007, 2008?
I have another card. If you have any other questions, you can actually speak with staff later on, okay? Angel Escudero?
I came here in the name of Victorville to request for a police department to, you know, to be for the city, because the police department, everybody agrees with me that is from the town. That police department been there, according to my knowledge, since 1970, around 1970. And nineteen, yeah, 1970, it's so long ago, you know? We need a bigger police department and be, and more police officers, because it took me with my experience, you know, that I was elder abuse, and I needed an emergency. And, not an emergency, I called them, you know, to serve me first, and they took me from nine o'clock in the morning to next day at two o'clock. And I didn't wanna call emergency, because, you know, emergencies for a real emergency, but I was being abused, you know? And I'm still being abused from my landlord. But I, I would, you know, the city's helping me a lot, so I'm willing to help my, the city with anything I can, you know? But take in consideration, please, that we really need a police department, because if we don't have no justice, all the, I went to your meeting, you know, for, for, what was that, the meeting for?
In the light picture.
Yeah, there was a special meeting for all the victims. And I'm, everybody agreed with me that it won't be so many victims if we had a police department, you know, which we don't have, we don't have. And you have, but I've counted a lot of districts attorneys and supervisors, and they don't have a case because they can't get a police report. It takes about two months to get a police report. And I think the money that's going to, you know, it should, we need a police department for the city, because their own department is for the town. It was for a town, it was a blessing, police department. The police department should be blessed, because it's a lot of men that put their life, even myself, I've been a police, a volunteer police officer. Who was the best volunteer police officer in the...
You have thirty seconds.
And we need a police, because I've never been, you know, to a city that it takes to make a report, about three months to get to report to the DA. It didn't take too long. We need, we need help. The city needs help, more protection, not so many victims. We need the service, without the service of the police, we need nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those were all the cards that I had. Now we move on to report from city manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just a few items. First, we're gonna host our 22nd Annual Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony, that's November 12th. We're looking for participants to include in that effort. We have an application process to actually include those that are veterans, provide them with recognition. So the submissions for that consideration is due this October 18th. Stop the Bleed Workshop, this is a workshop that many of us as staff has attended, and we're opening it up to the public. It's a, it's a training to help understand how to operate simple things like a tourniquet. So very informational, helpful to the public. Victorville Community Cleanup Day is Saturday, October 20th. We've got over a thousand volunteers already signed up for that event, so we're looking forward to another successful Community Cleanup Day. Victorville City Library is celebrating on October 25th, Read for the Record. And then we have a Shred Fest and Mulch Giveaways Saturday, November 3rd, and that's over at the Murph on Abbey Lane. That's all I got.
Sorry, have, thank you, thank you very much. Now we move on to E3, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items for the Upcoming City Council Agenda. I'll start with Mr. Negrete. Gomez, do you have anything?
Yes, the message for we, the rising people, that comes from Torrance, Upland, surrounding cities, Apple Valley, including Ruth Cordova, Maggie Martin, April Pinkston, who unfortunately suffers from PTSD. I respect your personal opinions, but I hope you start redirecting your energy to city business, which is what we're trying to get done here.
This is for, for agendizing for the next.
So let me go ahead and do the agenda item. For, I'd like to see if we can have a workshop so that we can start addressing some of the issues with terms of homelessness. I know this was agendized and motioned, but we haven't seen it quite yet, so I'm not sure if it's been forgotten, or it's gonna be here along the next four or five months or so, so I wanted to make sure that that hadn't died in its course. So that's one of the agenda items that I like to make sure that we're still on top of and it hasn't been forgotten. So basically, that would be the motion, make sure we didn't forget it.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, it might be helpful to know that we've already been provided that direction. We've actually been meeting internally as staff. We've had two large working sessions amongst staff, leadership, and the police department. And we're actually working on a presentation currently, and we don't have an exact date. We certainly haven't forgotten, but we are bringing that matter before the council on a workshop setting at a future date.
The other thing is adding a discussion and a possible action in regards to revisiting the 42nd, or possibly would be the 43rd Amendment to Police, specifically looking at police training. I don't think the city council this last year has asked for any activity in how we are enforcing or using training so that the community feels safe. We've had use of force, whether it is something that is legitimate or illegitimate. We have a community that has become intimidated far too often. We realized that the response times, as one of the public comment individuals made it, known that it took him from nine to two the following day, that we didn't have that response time, so I don't know what our response times are. And terms also with community rights for transparency, we don't see any reports on a quarterly basis, and I don't think I've ever seen a report but a contract. And so those are some of the things that perhaps we can start exercising or looking for a future to solidify the community, that there is trust, and we are looking into the issues, you're not being ignored, and if it feels that way, maybe we need to start bringing some of these items to the table. And so that's something that I would like to also add to the agenda.
Is the police department required to give us reports?
I'd have to go back and look at the contract, but I do receive reports from the police department on just recurring a police report activity. So if the councils desire us, we can certainly share that with you.
But we would have to vote on that. Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
Then that was it.
Okay, now we move on to E4, which is reports from council members, and this one is a three-minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Gomez first. You have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm writing them right now, so if you wanna wait the three minutes, or you wanna go to someone else.
I'm giving you three minutes, and if you don't, if you're not prepared, then you lose your...
No, I'm not prepared, and I'm not gonna lose them.
Yes.
No, I'm not.
Anyone else? No?
I have, I'm not sure what the, did Pepper get her questions answered? If she didn't, please contact the staff. Seems to be some confusion. She indicated this was answered in the affirmative act, I think some debate at the college. I don't know who answered the affirmative, it wasn't a staff member of the city because it didn't happen, so. Can you still grow? This is twice she's raised the issue. I wasn't here in 2007 or '08, so I have no idea the council, what they did with that. That was a bond issue, it's complicated, but there's misinformation. I hope that some staff member will meet with her and...
Just wanted to add one thing, we're on comments. I agree with the gentleman's comment tonight that this is an important election, and, but everyone is important. I don't remember one that wasn't important. And everyone we face, we get the same message, "This is the most important election in the history of the country." Well, this is an important election. You're right, we do have some experience of what happens when you get a, you know, I don't know that it's a question of qualifications. It's more a question of wanting to learn. There are two human attributes that I think are deadly, and they lead us to very bad decisions. One of them is ignorance, and the other one is fear. They feed each other. Being ignorant is not stupid. What's stupid is being ignorant and choosing to remain ignorant. That's really stupid. Information is available. We have to be open to it, we have to be willing to listen to it. When you're voting, I hope that's the approach you take, because if you don't, if you rely on the things you're ignorant about, you're gonna be fair prey to anybody who's promoting fear, because they'll do everything they can to make you afraid of what they want you to be afraid of. And all of that together leads to bad, bad, bad decisions. Our country has had a lot of experience with bad decisions over many years, not just the last four, not just the last 12, many, many years, and it's usually because of ignorance and fear. You can overcome those attributes, you got a chance of making a good decision, and I hope everybody makes a really good decision this time around.
So I'd like to dispel the myth that was brought up by Mrs. Pinkston. I have never gone to any commercial business to intimidate any individual, so that is not correct. The other thing that I like to share is, I would like to ask if the city staff had federal government funds that were being released, and did we apply for those homeless assistance funds? I don't know, but I know Mr. Darrell Evey did state that there were funds within two weeks. I don't know if we applied for them. The next thing is, during the last few weeks, I've been circulating residential commercial properties and asking what their concerns were, and the biggest concerns were that public safety. On October 2nd, Lawanda Phillips, age 36, happened to die by the hands of a deputy officer, and I know we had public strategies coming to Rick Bessenger and bringing some concerns with the community, 'cause I know I was there as well, bringing some of my own concerns. So hopefully, we're able to look at some of this, these issues, and if there are miscommunications, hopefully, we can be more communicative, that way the community doesn't feel unsafe when there is a police officer. And if it's not transparent, hopefully transparency will create a sense of communication and a sense of understanding that perhaps it's, there is not enough information, and that information needs to get to the ears of the public so that they can indeed feel safer in our communities. Thank you.